Well, now I'll call the July 31st, 2025 special meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Education. Phillip will lead us into the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Vision statement: Lincoln County Schools equipping students to learn, conquer, succeed. Mission statement: The mission of Lincoln County Schools in partnership with students, staff, parents, and the community is to equip students with the skills necessary to be lifelong productive citizens in an ever-changing global society.
Okay, we will start with our action items, two A change order and proposal request for Lincoln County High School renovation. Brad?
Thank you all for meeting on short notice. It's time is of the essence as it has been much of the summer. So I think you all should have the document in front of you, and I'll discuss change order three. And what we're going to be looking for is approval of change order three and the backpack supplemental form that'll go with it. Change order three is comprised of four items that you'll see there, and I'll kind of talk through all of them, starting with the most pressing matter, which will should be the first piece of information you have there within the change order. So last time we spoke about the project, we were talking about the floor jacking and that, you know, taking off. We have done that since then, and we have ran into some issues. There was three areas of the school identified as part of the slab jacking areas. Two on the front hallway, as you come into the building, if you turn right down that hallway, just to kind of give you an area of an idea of what we're talking about. Then the other being the hallway that people have always kind of noticed. Originally, the engineers gave us kind of a game plan to go underneath, pump concrete up, get them back. I am happy to report one of those three areas that weren't perfect. The floor looks good, apart from the bathroom, it's came back up. Where we ran into an issue in the other two areas, they had pumped the concrete that they originally planned to pump down in there, and it's not making a difference at all. I know in one area, I think it is the hallway area, six yards of concrete, and it's not brought it up at all. So this has caused the engineer, the architect, and Branson to have a little hesitancy about moving forward and just blindly pumping it in there. So what you're going to see, and I have a report here from the engineer. If you go to the page, it's got clock filter, samba car at the top. You kind of skim down through there to the description portion. What they're recommending we do is saw cut and remove existing concrete floor slab in classroom 116, classroom 303, and the corridor adjacent 303, which is that hallway. But what they want us to do is remove enough of the slab where they can get under there and actually get a visual of what's going on. In a perfect world, as you would see here, we'd go back, gravel, and pour the slab back. But until we know what's causing those problems, it's really become a life safety issue. We can't really put people in those areas, especially classroom 116 is the one that I probably have the most issue with at this point. The slab, the depth of the slab is nowhere near where it needs to be in the center of that room. You get to the sides of the room, it's pretty good shape. So until we figure out what's going on, we're kind of at a standstill. Now, how does this impact the schedule of the project? If we can isolate and get down to where we're just working on two rooms, that's not going to slow up Branson and what they're working on. The problem is the corridor, because obviously we can't finish flooring and all that sort of stuff when we got to tear this floor up and get under and see what we need to do next. So the change order, it's kind of vague in the sense of what we need to approve Branson will do is to work on time and material, and you'll see that's listed there. Basically, they'll track how much time, how much material they need to build back, and that's what, you know, we'll be responsible for when that goes, as you see listed there. I'm going to skip back to the description, because I think they did a good job of describing the situation. I kind of read through the first item there. If you look at item two in the description, install new slab and reinforcement throughout the area, remove new slab and existing, the edges, new slab surface to be flush with existing slab. Obviously, you want to get it back up to where it was at. That's what they're talking about there. And then it kind of talks about how they discovered it. Recent slab jacking efforts have revealed that there's a void space under each location and an undetermined depth, and that's the issue. Their initial board, they thought what we put in there would work. And as I mentioned, it did in the one room. So that just tells me there's more going on underneath there, and we're not going to be able to discover it and fix it until we get the slab up and we can get in there and see what's going on. Then the last part, you just see infill material below the slab and efforts to provide proper support to be calculated by the general contractor on a time and material basis. So they got to gave Branson the formula of what they want to see done. So that's where you see the change order. That's how it's written, that it's based off the recommendation from clock filter. And once we do get in there, see what's going on, we'll bring in a third-party geotechnical engineer that we've used before to kind of give us advice to make sure there's nothing more. And I keep stressing that, and I know a couple of you all are kind of giving me a hard time when we talked about initially, but this was some of my worry. You start dealing with something like this, and honestly, I'm thankful that we have found it, because I do have a lot of concern about classroom 116. I could not sit here tonight and recommend you all put students back in that room. So it's kind of a multi-layered issue, but we got to get to, I think, and what I'm instructed them to do if we approve this tonight is start in the hallway. That way, we can keep trucking and hopefully work that corridor and get it all the way done. It's going to take some extra time, obviously. And when I say extra time, I'm not necessarily talking about the construction schedule. I just mean in general. This is going to slow things up. We've had a couple unforeseen things happen over the last couple of months, and we have battled through them, and it is, it's been a lot of work, it's been a lot of effort. I do want to give a lot of thanks to my, even my school staff, custodians, my workers or maintenance, they have worked. Some of them come in even working third shift instead of first shift to work out of the way to these guys for us to get some other things done that I haven't even had to bring to you all. I'm very proud of their effort and their work. And I'll kind of, just while we're talking about this, because it does all play together. I am pleased with the progress. Otherwise, I think things are going well. We're moving in a good direction. But I do think with this coming up, to properly fix it, we're probably going to need to look at keeping staff and students out there a little longer than we hope. My recommendation would be look at, assuming we approve this, look at starting school at a later date than August 25th, and I think, you know, we'll get to that, but I just, that is my recommendation to you all from an operation standpoint. There's three other pieces of this, but this is the main piece. So I want to open it up to you guys now for questions and comments with this first piece of the change order.
How long will it take to get that, the UES in there to tell us what?
As soon as we get it opened up.
Now, my next question is kind of a hard one, too. You might not be able to answer. What's the chance that we can fix whatever this is?
That's a million-dollar question, if I'm being honest with you. I don't want to cause panic, and I don't want to make people think it's something that it isn't, because we won't know until we get in there. I still, I have talked to them some, and they still feel like we can get it open. And if they don't see anything other, any other issues, then we can go with their plan, fill, you know, get the slab back down and move along. We get, that's going to be, that's what we got to find out then. It really is. We're at that point. I think we need to find out if this is going on in other places we don't know, if it's just natural settling. You know, it's called open in 1974, so we don't know yet. And that's why I wanted to get you all together tonight, because as soon as you all give me authorization, I will get them mobilized. Honestly, I've already talked to them today. I'm like, I'm hoping I get something tonight, and we can mobilize as soon as possible and get to work on this.
And it's just a safety issue, you can get.
Absolutely.
I can't imagine we would ever put our students and our staff in danger. I think one question will be, is there another plan being cultivated to make sure that we're not bumping this off again, that these kids are going to make school?
Yeah, so like, and that's why I mentioned the normal construction schedule, a phase one that we've been working on all summer. I feel like it's progressing in a good, in a good fashion to where, other than this, by the 25th, we'll be in good shape. Now, we're going to need some time for our teachers to get acclimated. We're going to need some time for our custodians to do their normal maintenance type of things, and that's the reason my recommendation, no matter what. Let's say we get in there next week, like, hey, we can fix this quick. I still feel like this is causing a pause this week. We need some extra time. To answer your question, yes, I have started some conversations with Mr. Willoughby about, hey, worst-case scenario, start thinking about operating without two classrooms. Worst-case scenario, start thinking about how do we make this work without a corridor being open for some time? And that's when we'd have to, you know, bring in our engineers. At that point, if it was something real severe, Tyler, we would have to bring in the state different types of folks. But I can tell you now, Mr. Willoughby's already starting to think through, you know, next step, worst case, super worst-case scenario, yes, we're having those conversations. We sure are.
I went out there with Bruce and Brad and the one, classroom 116. I did not feel safe standing on top of that, because it, it's very obvious how it slants down, and Brad showed me the thickness would be next to the walls. It's that thick maybe. And down here, it's like this, and you look down those holes that they have bored. Well, I didn't feel comfortable, but I mean, you know.
Six yards of concrete went somewhere, didn't it?
Yes, yes.
That's annoying, like, if it, if it come down to you, like, that it's going to take longer for even, like, the whole corridor area, can the rest of the school still be open?
That's what we're hoping.
As long as it's, yeah, they're over there.
Once we get that peeled back, and once we get that layer of the onion peeled back, and we see what the next layer holds, we can start making some more informed decisions.
They could manage if they were down, down those classrooms that are down there.
That's the reason I wanted to get you guys together tonight. That way, the sooner I can get this approved and get them started, the sooner we're going to get type of information we need to start making other plans.
Okay. So can they, instead of pulling up a big slab here in this area, can we not use a snake with a camera on it?
Yeah, well, it's a good question, Phillip. So one thing in talking to them today that they do want to do is some more test boards, too, in those areas. And they'll probably start using more types of devices like that once they get in there. I think they know enough to where, no matter what the remedy is, they want to see us get some more backfill in there, which causes a problem, because you all think about where those areas are at. We're going to have to get gravel in there somehow. We've already been pouring concrete in those areas. It's pretty fascinating how they've done that, but we're going to be able to pour quite a bit of concrete in a couple of these areas, no matter what. So the, you know, exploration process will probably change some the more they get out there. As part of this proposal from our architect and engineer, they do want to see some more testing done, too, before they just rip and roar, because I think I'm thinking the same way as you. I don't want to get it and tear it up if it's just concentrated area, and they're thinking the same way. So I think, I actually saw some correspondence this afternoon talking about, as soon as we get approval, unless, they want to get engineers to give them a real defined, you know, area of where we're concentrating at. So I do think that's going, yeah.
Any other questions?
Even if they get all that done, do they still have to rip the slab up in order to backfill it? Because like, I can see you can pump.
So I think in 116, no matter what, I think it's going to have to come up, at least half that. So imagine the size of the classroom. In my mind, and I'm no engineer, at least half of that will probably need to come up and be redone to be properly corrected.
Trying to paint, like, you can't pump gravel down it.
Yeah, they're going to have to.
Some part of it's going to have to.
Yeah, after they do a little more exploration, I think, yeah, it's going to have to come up. I do. So getting it in there is difficult, which leads to the next part of this. If you all are okay with me moving on, talk about the next part. So I got to thinking, because I'm, my mind has been thinking a lot the last week. What can I do to try to move things along, help the schedule? And then one thing I've come up with is the next thing you're going to see here, it says proposal request number seven. And this is talking about the terrazzo, which right now is scheduled to go from the front lobby of the building down the main corridor, all the way past the library, past that lobby, to the cafeteria. Terrazzo is going to take about two weeks, once we start doing it. We only have two weeks right now, so I've thought, all right, how do we get around this? So what we've come up with, and this is basically what this proposal in front of you is, we would keep terrazzo in the front lobby. Well, it's going to have a stamp of our logo in, like, it's been part of the design the whole time. The front lobby is confined in the high school for security measures. There's doors to the left, right, and then the front going toward the library. Once you get to the door going to the library, we'll switch back and go to VCT, like we're doing in the hallways. What that would do is, that's a lot quicker process. Also, we need to start thinking about saving some money. We're going to save quite a bit of money if we do this. And the reason this will really work, in my mind, is we can keep the front lobby unfinished right now. We'll clean the concrete. It'll just be concrete. I've already got an idea, talking to them, bringing the terrazzo people back in on fall break. I said, I can give you nine days, come back in, finish the terrazzo on fall break. And that will leave us being able to wait as long as possible to put tile down on the two areas that they're going to have to figure out ways to come in and work. In worst-case scenario, we can leave those as concrete. We can start school that way. And we can do the tile on fall break, too, worst-case scenario. So that gives us some options. They can finish the ceilings. Everything can be finished, other than the floor in those areas. So thinking it through, that gives us the best possibility of still somewhat meeting the schedule we need to meet and be able to do the work. It gives us a little flexibility. And the great news about it, if we do these things, I just told you, odds, you're going to see there, if we delay the terrazzo $46,800, then we come back and add material labor for VCT in those areas. The total credit we'll give back to the project's $38,760, which we're going to need to turn around and use toward whatever we're facing with this new obstacle that's been put in our path. So that's the reason I have got them to include this in that change order. Moving along to the other pieces of the change order proposal request number eight. This is an easy one. I originally had new handrail in a few areas of the school. Instead of going with new handrail, which was going to be really a long lead times, I've talked to them about sanding the existing, coming back and just painting it. And it'll, from a, it's fine otherwise. They work fine, and it's going to match the color scheme we're doing now with the green to black. So it's an easy save of $4,000, and we don't have to worry about them not being here. Like, as I mentioned, it's for some odd reason, a lot of lead time on the ones we had. And then the third or the fourth piece to the proposal request, again, I'm just looking at it, waiting for us to save some money. Got a question?
Yeah, where are the?
Um, there's two going down the ramp into the cafeteria, down that little ramp. And there's another one somewhere that Phillip, I can't even remember off the top of my head right now, but that's the main one there.
Yes, I guess they're just so out of the way yet.
Right, you.
You don't really think about it.
Exactly right. But they're probably original from 1974, and they just need something. But if we sand them down and paint them, they're going to look good. They're going to look brand new.
What's the carpet padding part of that, of that portion, $545?
Oh, yeah. Good question. I forgot that was on there, Phillip. So the carpet padding, the office suite, where all of our administrators are at in the building, they're getting carpet tile in those areas, and in looking at some samples, the carpet tile they were getting has a padding on it. Carpet tile doesn't need padding. So they presented me with the possibility of saving some money there, and I said, sure, I'll save 500 bucks. It doesn't need it. It's not going to impact anything. So just again, trying to find any way I can to save us some money. And the last one of those, we're getting ready to start doing some work. We've been doing a lot of work on the roof and masonry walls around the gym, but the roofing contractors that have been working in Wayneburg are getting ready to shift down there and start on their part of this project. And originally, you can't see this from anywhere unless you're up on top of there, above the lobby. There's some equipment up there that I was initially going to remove. There's no reason to remove it. I'd rather save $3,000. So I had them add that in, too. So in total.
So it's just sitting there?
Yeah.
Like, what kind of equipment? Just sitting there on the roof?
Uh.
Projectile if a windstorm comes through?
No, 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 nothing like that. Honestly, something we may reuse again in the future. Depends on how things go, how satisfied we are with our fan we're putting in and things like that. But it's things that used to be in service in that area of the building that aren't anymore. It could be, it could be useful later on down the line. This was just a suggestion from the architect when we were initially doing it. I've talked to him. It impacts nothing. It's not going to hurt anything. I've talked to the roofers. They can flash and work around it. They actually gave me the recommendation to just leave it and save them money. So in total, if you go back to the beginning, if we accept these change orders, our proposal request, it's going to give us quite a bit of savings there. First page, you guys got that? Then obviously, the portion of the change order we don't know the cost of will just be the first part, which will be time and material to Branson, to start work on the slab areas.
If we approve this change order with all these TDVs that are on there, and you, I mean, obviously, we're not paid for it, but is there a limit that we put on here, or is it just basically a blank check? Do what you got to do?
They'll have to turn in tickets to prove the time and material they've used. And of course, I'm out there all the time. I'll verify that. That's the cleanest way to do it, because they can't give you it. Really, we wouldn't want to, because our hope and prayers that they get in, there's nothing major. And if they threw some big number on it and we agree to it, that's why the architects recommend it, since it's an exploration-type thing, just for them to show us time and material.
Right. Is it going to be shown to us, like, along the way, or is it, like, at the end, they'll hand it off?
Uh, I mean, we could probably ask that they do.
Well, I guess my question just was, is this a blank check? We're trying to blank check, get the job done. If it's $500, it's $500. If it's $1.8 million, it's $1.8 million, and we're even, no matter what.
I mean, they'll have to prove what it costs.
Well, I'm not worried about them ripping this off. I'm just trying to think, like.
Yes, I, I, I mean, yeah, we don't know the cost. We don't. That's the simplest answer I give you.
And we can do, we can do a report to you, maybe on the, you know, monthly things, their staff reports, just kind of, just to be up to date.
Yeah, and I think it'll be resolved.
I know, I know with Leanne talking about how, we don't, all we have is a couple of things left over anyway. We are counting every time, so I do not want to have a heart attack when you come in here.
Absolutely.
Once they cut those slabs and.
Yeah, we'll know.
They're bursting in here. They're going to have a, they're going to have a.
Maybe every two weeks, or every month, as fast as they're going to roll. I'm going to report it for two weeks. There's no problem.
At least each meeting.
If we approve this tonight, when are, when will they start on those floors?
Monday.
So we have a meeting Thursday. Will, will they know something about Thursday to?
Hopefully.
To give us an update.
Yeah, and I'll plan on.
Next week.
I'll plan on giving you guys an update.
I mean, it, you know, it doesn't have to be, for me, it doesn't have to be anything official, just to.
Yeah, yeah.
Simply, you know, I.
And even to that matter, I can update Bruce, and he can shoot you guys a text. That's no problem.
Just so we not have.
They're hoping to get in there Monday and start with some more boards, and then Tuesday, if everything goes correctly, start digging, start digging it up somehow.
We can keep that forward.
That'd be great. Okay. Any other questions? Do I hear a motion to approve change order number three in the backpack supplemental information form for the Lincoln County High School renovations?
I'll make a motion.
Tyler, second?
I'll second.
Phillip, second. Vote Gloria.
Yes.
Phillip?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
And I vote yes. To be revised 2025-2026 school calendar.
Thank you, Brad, for answering all that.
Yes.
I don't envy you of your job.
No. Many prayers, for sure.
I don't envy you either.
Considering the ongoing construction challenges, the administrative team has collaboratively developed a revised school calendar proposed. Following adjustments were intended to ensure a smooth start of the school year while meeting state requirements. We also tried to protect fall and spring break, because in recent years, that's always been a non-negotiable. We know that families and staff members, many of them have made plans for those days. So August the 18th and the 19th will become professional development days. August the 20th through the 28th will be staff work days. Opening day will be August 29th. September the 1st will be Labor Day. September the 2nd through the 5th, staff work days. September the 8th will be the first student day. October, our fall break will remain unchanged. It will still remain the first full week in October. And then November, November the 26th will be a flexible professional development day. November the 27th, Thanksgiving. November the 28th will be a break day. And then our Christmas break is December 22nd through the January, through January the 1st. And January the 2nd will be a flexible professional development day. January the 19th, Mark Luther King Jr. Day. February and March, staff work days have both been removed. April the 6th to the 10th will be spring break. May the 19th will be a staff work day. May the 25th, Memorial Day, so there will be no school on that day. May the 28th will be a staff work day. May the 29th, closing day. And June, the 1st to the 11th will be makeup days. Our last student day will be May the 27th. And this calendar meets state requirements. 1,080 hours of instructional time, 1,062 are required.
Any questions?
Phillip has some questions.
So my first question is, for our instructional, our staff, our teacher, the teachers that need hours to become, to finish their certification that they're going through with Cumberland Valley, they need 70 instructional days before Christmas break. If I'm counting correctly, I think there are 68 instructional days before Christmas break. If we keep the calendar as it is right now, all those teachers that have agreed and signed contracts with us to work this first semester will be breaking their contract with their, with Cumberland Valley or whoever it is that they go through, and they're not going to get certified. So we need to come up with a solution to put 70 instructional days in there, unless there's a loophole or a waiver. Now, I don't know enough about the program. That's probably a Jeannie Cooper question. But I feel like we're going to do some, I know of three. There's probably others that are in this program. But for those that, when Lincoln County started this program a couple of years ago, this class of hours, this is, the first class is ready to finish the program by Christmas break. That should get them all their hours. And if we don't do it, then we're really doing them a misjustice. So that's a concern that I have, the first concern that I have. I mean, the rest of it is forgetting the instructional hours or whatever. That's fine, but they get their student teaching hours, that there's so many hours that they have to get.
And this is through Cumberland University?
I think it's Cumberland or somebody, somebody told me, I might have it in one of my things, but they have to have 70 instructional days before Christmas. Miss Hart, do you know what I'm talking about?
I don't.
Well, that's not helpful.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm not an expert, but I've had a couple of them talk to me and say that, hey, we need 70 instructional days.
70 instructional days.
Before Christmas break. And now, because they've already signed their.
It says 70 full days or its equivalent, so I would need to call them, but I would think if they completed their professional days and everything, they, you know.
It's not, it would include their staff work, I mean, their professional development.
70 full days or its equivalent.
70 full days.
So the ones that I've talked to are under the impression that their staff days and PD days do not count. It has to be instructional days. As the calendar was written with us starting on August 25th, there were 72 instructional days before this proposal.
So there's not now, was there?
So there's not now. 67, okay. I counted it once, it got 67, once it got 68.
It was 67.
Okay, so I feel like we need to make up three days in order to, and Jeannie may know how many folks we actually have that fall into this category in the entire district, but from the two schools that I've heard from so far, I know of at least three. And that was something that Lincoln County implemented. And that was something that Lincoln County implemented a couple of years ago to help them through, to keep them in the district once they get their teaching certification. I mean, you guys know this better than I do.
Do they have to teach a certain grade?
Uh, I, I guess it probably...
Does anybody know? Nobody knows what he's talking about?
Well, it's where they're assigned.
Yeah, I mean, they're assigned, and I think they do, there's so many observations that they have to have.
With, because heads, head, preschool and head start will be under this calendar that we're changing, right? Their calendars will stay the same.
Well, I think...
So at that time for next week.
Right. I think the people that are in these programs are supposed to do it. Like, they, like, I signed a contract. They, they signed a contract with us, and then they get it approved through Cumberland University or whoever it is, and they say, okay, this is your... Because my, my first recommendation was, well, why don't you take these two weeks that we're off and go teach at Garrett County for free for five days or seven days or whatever?
Yeah, it's not a, it's a contract.
That's not, yeah, it's a contract thing. So if there's a loophole or a way to get around it, then, then hit it for a, and we can take care of everybody, but if there's not, then we need to add three instructional days on here. But we're, we're really severely hampering these peoples.
Do we need to?
Can somebody call Jeannie Cooper? Can we do this?
Sorry, can you, while we're... I mean, we can, we can take a quick recess, and while Miss Clark calls and asks the question, I don't mind sitting around waiting, because I think it's that important.
Yeah, it is.
Stay in the evening, take the recess.
Yes.
You have to take the recess, it's not gonna go in.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to take a ten-minute recess?
I'll say it.
Okay. Vote Gloria?
Yes.
Phillip?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
All right, who did, who, who?
I'll make a motion.
Phillip.
Okay.
Call back to order.
Okay. I apologize, when you said Cumberland Valley, I had no idea what that was or what you were talking about. University of Cumberland. So I just didn't, I needed the proper name. So if they are a student that is in the University of Cumberland, and they are completing their teaching certificate, they do need seventy instructional days. However, it says or equivalent. So I can't imagine that a university wouldn't work with us, but of course, if I, if we had known during the day, whoever reached out to you with this concern, had reached out to us, we could have called Dr. Wallace and got confirmation with that. I can't, you know, we tried to call her, but obviously, it's seven o'clock at night, and I'm sure she's on personal time, so she's not gonna answer at this time. So that is something we can look into, because obviously, we wouldn't wanna hurt someone's program. But again, I can't imagine a university wouldn't work with us, given the circumstances. Worst case scenario, if you approve this calendar and she does need two more days, we can put, you know, or whomever it may be, I don't, I said she, but whomever the teacher is that would need it. They could work with our early childhood, because they have extra days and they can proceed in their building. They're allowed, they don't have to follow the same calendar as us, whereas everyone else does. So they could work in that program if the university wanted them to, or if we're missing two days, we could add on a day in Christmas break, or add, I mean, we still have flexibility. So we could add something on if the university says so, but I can't imagine the University of Cumberland would not work with us, given the circumstances. But again, I can't speak on their behalf without talking to them.
Right. And, and there's also no guarantee that dropping down into pre-k will satisfy the requirements of whatever...
I'm just telling you all the options that we could lay out to the university. But again, I can't speak on their behalf without... I'm just telling you that, all the options I can think of that we could do.
Okay, well, I guess the question would be, how do we move forward with that particular...
Well, as I said, if you want to, so we could, you could approve this calendar, and if we find that it's gonna hurt, you know, employees, obviously, we're not gonna do that. We can come before you and add more days, but this way, we at least know what we can tell a construction crew when they can move forward, knowing they've got the time to do what they need to do.
Yeah, I'm good with all that. I'm talking about who is taking on the responsibility of confirming the seventy instructional days. Jeannie will do it. We'll be, we'll be working on that, but, I mean, we need to make a decision on this calendar this evening, because we need to do some notifications and make some plans. And, uh, basically, this kind of determines, you know, what we're gonna be able to do.
Uh, it's like with what Brad's gonna go ahead.
Say, if all else failed, and if they come back saying, no, they can't go to preschool, you know, that you have to, do we have a guarantee that we're gonna come back and we're gonna modify the calendar?
Absolutely, he would definitely.
You know, even if it means taking days off of a break or something?
I mean, I know my program, I'm a super junior, right?
Yeah. I have to assume especially with our, with the situation, there, you know, that I look at this situation.
These are beyond our control.
Can you, uh, just like with, what we've worked out with Brad, or like, can you send us a message or something, just for informational purposes tomorrow, to let us know what?
Yes.
Absolutely. And they might even approve for, you know, whoever this is to even do two days in another district. We, we will explore all options. We obviously don't want to hurt employees. We just wanna make sure our kids are safe. We wanna make sure we can communicate as well with construction workers. And like I said, anytime there's a concern like that, if we know during the day, then, you know, we can check on that immediately and make sure that it's taken care of, for sure.
This way, you can find out how many people are involved in this.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm sure Jeannie is tracking that somewhere.
Yes.
But I also understand that it's not just a student teacher, but also a teacher that has a student teacher under them. So for every three, it would...
Again, we'll, we'll decide, because they're gonna give, they're going to work with, if they're gonna work with one entity, they're gonna work with all. But again, I can't speak on their behalf, but I can't imagine that we're not working with them.
We'll go, we'll find out the details on it. I just, it just makes me feel better to know that everybody is aware now, and something that we have to consider, something we can work, and that we'll find a solution. I, I'm good with that, so.
All right. Do I hear a motion to approve the revised twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school calendar as presented by Mr. Ray Binger? Your motion?
I'll make a motion.
Tyler, second?
I'll second.
Jen, second? Vote Gloria?
Yes.
Phillip?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Do I hear him? You're welcome.
I, I, I need to know for sure that we're not gonna, I started this conversation earlier and shut up, because it's gotta be at a board meeting. We, we can't do this again in two weeks. We gotta have another plan if this don't, is not fixable in two weeks. And I'm sorry, but it's, we left it to you guys to figure it. You know, Stacy was in the class that went to the middle school, and it was postponed, and postponed, and postponed, and then she went to the middle school at Christmas, and graduation was up in June.
But I think anytime you get into construction, you cannot, if you're building your own home, you can't always have a set plan and that plan guaranteed. I think, you know, we have to hold for the best.
That's why we gotta think about Plan B.
Make sure we got Plan B.
That's what I, that's what I asked. Let me ask for this. I mean, I think we can, I think, let me think this through. I think we're discussing cali- calendars been on here. Yet for some reason, we have to change, basically, the only option of this, this first semester would be the breaks. And then, but we need that time. That's basically it.
No, well, I don't disagree with you to a certain extent, but we're, we're given two weeks, and we're already pushed up against the wall. I think what Gloria is saying, correct me if I'm wrong, is that we should still plan on starting on September eighth with the new proposed schedule. But if the school cannot accommodate due to the hallway being jacked up or the floors in the other two classrooms, then there needs to be a plan to work around that, one hundred percent.
And I think he's already...
I'm just playing the implication.
He's working back, you know, to keep his classroom, what was it, one sixteen or that?
I think the hallway is the bigger concern, more so than just the same classroom, that. So, but I think it's gonna wait to determine what they find when they get in there, what's gonna be. We all need to pray for a mild winter.
Yes, and no flood.
Hey, that's right.
And no more flooding.
No flooding, no tornadoes.
Would you like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Uh, would, uh, yes, I would make a motion. Phillip made a motion to adjourn the meeting. Jen, second? Vote Gloria?
Yes.
Phillip?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
We need a Plan B.